Okay.
Nancy Cupka.
Present.
Mike Davenport.
Present.
Cheryl Fuller.
Cheryl, you're muted.
Present.
Thank you. Dan Nicholas.
I am here.
Terry Pavisic.
Here.
Rick Pavanado.
Here.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Joanna, you're muted.
Okay, well, we have a quorum, so should we stand for the pledge or?
Yes.
We should.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tell me, how do these choirs record this online and do that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Did you see that Saturday night with all those stars going back and forth? Oh. Yeah.
No, that's a rod, so I'm thinking they got a lot of technical people.
I would think so, yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Okay. Well, I wasn't able to pull up the agenda because then my Zoom goes away, so.
I'll walk us through it. I have it up on the second screen. So the first thing is approval of minutes for the March 16th, 2020 business meeting and the April 6th, 2020 workshop meeting with action items.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We had Terry and Mike first.
Thank you. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Dan Nicholas.
Aye.
Rick Pavanado.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye. Minutes are approved.
Okay, the next one is reception of visitors. We get one more listeners in here, but there was nothing being moved.
We're dark.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Hank. I don't know if anybody else is.
Yes.
Looks like my internet went a little flaky there in my back now.
Yeah.
Still a little garbled.
Yeah.
Yes.
Neighbor of the afternoon, so.
Are you tapping into your neighbor's Wi-Fi?
Yeah, that's what I think is happening. My neighbors are tapping wrong on my back or spunky.
No, you're really twangy. Yeah.
Because it's totally dark.
It's speaking. We can't hear you at all now.
What matter? Evening, Kim. Julie, can you walk them through the end? We'll be right back.
Okay.
Can you bring up the, can you bring up the, I can't bring up my agenda. I was looking at it.
Next is reception, reception of visitors, Nancy.
Yeah, do we have any visitors though?
Dr. Seeley would have those, so when he gets back, we can go back to that.
Okay.
Next item is the third quarter financial report.
Mr. Stalen?
Right, so let me jump into that. We're gonna kind of do this a little bit differently. Usually I start with fund balances. We're gonna start out with the revenues. And I don't know if maybe Rod can flash that up there for you. There we go.
There we go.
If you look at our comparison to last year, and remember, this is cut off at the end of March, so we really haven't, we, you know, we were seeing the front end of this pandemic and things changed, but, you know, most of our revenues are right in line with expectation. The bigger concern is going to be going forward into the next quarter and maybe the next year or two with fallout from the pandemic. But right now, we're right on target with 94% compared to 93%. We only have two state aid payments, two state payments. We think they're gonna make the evidence-based funding method fund payments, but we aren't 100% sure. So we're getting some reassurance from ISB that they expect to do that, but there's no guarantee. So move on to the expenditures, Rod. The expenditures are really tracking just the same, and actually, there'll only be a couple of things that are affected by the time of the, by the end of the school year, because usually we can really closely project what we're gonna do by June 30th by looking at the expenditures in place now. But, and we're gonna pay salaries. I think every school is pretty much following that. They're not letting people go. Purchase services are up a little bit there. We, we have, just actually, you'll see on the, in tonight's agenda, energy contract change, but we're really doing just about normal for that, 72% overall compared to 71% overall for expenditures. Capital outlay is being held back in the transportation fund. That's for some mini buses that we decided not to buy during this fiscal year, but to buy them next fiscal year, so that's holding that, that number back a little bit. And tuition, much like us, all the places where we have kids in tuition, they're, they're holding onto their staff, so we're going to end up paying for, I believe, a good portion of tuition placements that we have coming up. So, and hold them until the end of the year. Now, maybe we can, we'll see what happens, but that's my understanding right now is everybody's getting billed for the tuition of the kids that they had outplaced and, at least for a large portion of the bill. I haven't seen any of those bills yet, but well, our expectation is that they'll still be, we'll be paying them through the end of the year. But the impact of, the next screen is the, is the fund balance. And you can see where we were. If you look at the, in the yellow percent of revenues column, it's roughly identical to where we were last year in terms of the percentage of the total. Bad news piece here was that our, our health benefit account, which is in the middle there and white, had another $520,000 drop, and this is due to usage. And we're, but, and we haven't got the impact. We changed the premium January 1st to the first quarter of this year. You know, we, so the last third quarter here is the only year where we've actually seen the, no change in the, in the increase in premium. So we did make some adjustments there, and I think that benefit, health benefit account will be, it'll start to right itself. Overall, we're about where we were last year. We're actually $82,000 higher than where we were last year at this time. But again, the real problem's gonna be in the fourth quarter. That's my big concern. And if anybody has any questions about the quarterly report, if not, I'll, I'll run into my projection for next year a little bit and some of the concerns I have about that. Any questions?
No.
I don't, there's no narrative. There's only my memo about the working cash bonds. That's the next agenda item. I feel strongly that we need to fortify our reserves at this point in time. I've always been able to run stuff really thin, you know, having a 3% to 4% reserve is, people look at me and say, what's going on? How do you do that? You know, we, we do have a tight budget management system, and I know, I know when we're gonna get into trouble. I just can feel it from all different directions that we're gonna get into trouble with funding in the next year or two. I think the state is digging such a deep hole right now. They're not really, I think we're, I'm not sure we'll get any new money from the state. I'm not even sure that, what rate they're gonna fund the mandated categoricals. I believe they'll give us our evidence-based funding money, but mandated categoricals, I think, are gonna take a hit. I think we're gonna jump into another recession here. With that, we'll have more waivers from families for fees. Our fees will go down, and that's just, that's just the registration, but athletic fees all the way across the board. I think we're gonna be needing to look at our services for these kids because we're probably gonna have more low-income kids and, and the fallout that comes from that, needing supports. So I, I just think now is the time to do it, and there's a, on the, what I've always had as a safety net for the district is our debt service extension base, and I wanna, just for all the board members, make sure they understand what that is really clearly, that when the tax caps were put into place, they kind of froze in place the amount of debt service we were paying for working cash bonds and life safety at that time. And what, and it happened to be a little more than 2 million, like $2.3 million in debt service that we were paying for working cash bonds and for life safety bonds. This is back in the early 90s. And so they, they allow us to keep that amount of money, $2.3 million, available for either working cash or debts or life safety. And we've used it a tiny bit here for work, for life safety, but I'm recommending that we issue a $10 million working cash bond. And what that'll do is that'll give us reserves that we can kind of weather any kind of storm without affecting our educational program. And if I'm wrong, and we actually don't have a recession, and things come back, and the state can fund things well, and we could, we could just, if we want, we could just repay the debt service that we put into that debt service extension base with the proceeds from the bonds. But what it does is it gives us just a safety net that we can hold on to. Couple more things that make our concerns for me. I think interest rates have already dropped by a full percent, and they were only at 2.5% before. So I think we're gonna have a hard time earning our interest that we would, it would always was, it's already a small amount, and I think we're gonna have a hard time. Having working cash bonds would allow us to invest those proceeds and, and use the interest for operations if we needed, would kind of replace the interest we're losing on the other, other investments that we have in place. So I think, I think that's another big piece here.
So anyways. One other variable here, Mark, is what we're hearing from DuPage County.
Oh, right.
About allowing people to delay, to either just choose to delay their first tax payment to September, or, or it might be that you have to prove that you have hardship, and then it would delay it till September. So we're also protecting against the fact that even our local, our local form of revenue could be delayed, you know, 60 to 90 days.
Right. It's very likely that they're going to approve that and, and let people know. About 40, 40, was it 45, almost 50% of people put it into escrow, and so that money they think would probably come through anyways. So it would, you know, maybe be 20 to 30 million that we would have slowed down and not get until September. And we, we run pretty thin through those months, so having the working cash fund would allow us to have that cash on hand just to make, pay our bills from the prior fiscal year in that first quarter of the, the first half of the property taxes that individuals will be paying.
Hey, Mark, Mark, this is Dan. With the interest rates being as low as they are right now, is 10 million enough? Would we be smarter? I mean, if we go into recession, there's theoretically a chance we could be facing a year to two years of some difficult financial circumstances for education, collecting from, from state, from federal. Should we be looking at a bigger number now than the 10 million?
I mean, I feel the 10 million would be pretty strong. It's only roughly 10% of our balance, so we'd have a 14% fund balance roughly, 13% to 14% fund balance to weather the storm. You know, it's something we could access pretty quickly if we needed it again. Interest rates are really good right now on, on the lending side, even though these would be totally taxable bonds. Working cash bonds are taxable bonds by law if you're gonna use them for operations or to support your operations. So, but even taxable, we're probably thinking that we're gonna pay 1.5% interest, and they're very short bonds. We have the debt service extension base filled up for the next couple of years for some life safety that we've done in some, in the past. But, so we would take probably the next four or five years after that, and so we're only talking about a seven-year issuance, and that's really a very short issuance for bonds. Most of them are for 20 years. So that's another reason that we can get a pretty low interest rate because there's no real long cost to that. We can talk about a different amount. I think, you know, we can, we can look, and we might know a little bit more in the next, we won't be able to issue until May or June. And a couple of key things are that we, we have to have the, the shelter in place removed logically because there's, it's subject to what's called a backdoor referendum. If individuals who don't want us to issue the bonds could pass a referendum or pass a petition, and if they, I think that somewhere in the area, 15,000 voters signed the petition, then that would stop the act. But that's never gonna happen. There's never, but they, the, our bond council has determined that it, it really wouldn't be a fair opportunity for them to collect any kind of petitions if there was a shelter-in-place order in the state. People couldn't, people won't answer the doors. They won't, you know, want, you know, intermingle with people. So we'd have to have that lifted for us to ask for the, that period to start, and it has to go for a month. And so we're probably talking about a June or July. And Dan, I, I, 10 is my gut right now is, is an adequate amount, but we, we do have another month or two to, to think this through and, and see what else happens at the state. If the state doesn't make their next couple of payments and they miss, miss another payment, you know, the two that we have coming, one or, one or two of those, yeah, then we, we might go to 14, $15 million, and it wouldn't cost us that much.
Mark, I thought that I read that it was increments of 10 million anyway. Is that not correct, meaning?
Increments of, no. Working cash you can do for any amount. You have to sell them, and increase, sell them to bond buyers in increments of 5,000.
Okay.
So, you know, that's, that's the only thing is you would issue them in increments of 5,000.
Okay.
5 billion, I'm sorry. Hello, 5.
I was thinking, I like that.
No, yeah, I said it right. 5,000 on the buyer's side.
Yeah.
And that's why we, we do it in millions like that.
Okay. So I, I thought, because I, I was thinking if, I guess the point is, would we, we could go back and if we did 10 million, and do it again, or is that not?
Yes, we can keep borrowing up to, until we reach our threshold.
Right. The 10 million's real safe for another, you know, future safety net. I think if, if we have some bigger problems beyond 10 million, I think we'd have to look internally and, and just look at tightening up something, giving rid of something, you know, making adjustments, and we'd have some time to do that. We'd only be using at this point about 1/3 of the debt service extension base that's available, so we could eventually get up to $30 million if we needed to do that. And we still have really good rating. Banks will love to buy this, so I think we'll have good competition between banks. We don't get to go to a big process. What we'll do is we'll send out and, and send to maybe five or six banks that do invest in school bonds and let them shop the rate and see what kind of rate we can get. They, they would probably love to get 1.5%. We might get 1% if we get enough banks involved, so.
And then Mike was asking about how we got the $10 million number. Part of it is, is that pretty closely matches what our state aid is for next year, so that if something should totally dry up with state funding, that would at least offset that amount. So we felt that that was a fair starting amount, and since then, we've found of these other revenue sources that might be tight, but we don't anticipate that 100% of the state money will be gone. We anticipate that perhaps local property taxes will be delayed, but we still expect to get 100% of that at some point. So this is really just a soft cushion for delays in funding, not necessarily a long-term replacement for that.
There really were two things that, because naturally, you're right. Thanks, Hank, for reminding me about that because we had a long conversation about that. That would cover pretty much the state and probably some of the, most of the federal too in terms of coverage. The, but we could have a hit from the property tax side too with this, you know, progressive tax rate coming up. He wants to swap property taxes for it. That's the other, another variable out there. But $10 million is, is a sweet spot for banks to buy. They like buying that, that level. They don't want to buy $30 million worth of bonds at one school, but they, they're pretty comfortable buying 10 million at a crack. So that, that was another reason it kind of rolled out of my head.
All right. Any other questions for Mark on this one?
So at some point during the, then you'll be seeing a request from me to pass a resolution that would authorize us to issue the bonds, and at that point, that would trigger a 30-day window for individuals to start a petition and stop it. It's never been done in the area here in DuPage. We have such a big tax base and number of voters that they have to get a large percent of those voters, and it's, it just wouldn't happen. And so you'll see something as soon as we get out of the shelter-in-place order.
All right. Next one is resolution on 2019 tax rates.
Yeah, and we've got a screen here. This went pretty well, actually. I think for those of you that recall, this is, I use the same graphic each year. If you start with the first column of numbers, it's 81,895. That's what we requested. I was pretty close with the tax, well, we had tax cap. We knew that was 1.9, but the new construction, I figured it was gonna be 0.95, and it came in at 0.93, so it hit pretty much right where we expected it to be. And so what, what means is that first column of numbers, we can't get all of that because we, we kind of pad it, pad that side of it just because we don't know exactly where to get into construction. And so we have to trim it down to 1.9% this year, more than we got last year, plus the new construction. So about 2.8% more revenue this year, 2.82 to be exact. And so we had to trim it back a little bit, and we do this every year. And if we announce where we want the final rate to be, and it's in that third column from the right, the final rate starts out with 1.3184. We decided to take it out of the, mostly out of the ed fund because it's got a healthy, healthier balance compared to the other funds right now, and just kind of rounded down the other ones and took just small amounts of the other funds just to keep them with what we asked for to keep that amount pretty much intact.
Just a reminder for everybody, this is always weird in school finance, the fact that Mark has to guess and levy what we believe the leviable amount will be. We know what CPI is, but we don't know what new construction is. Then after that levy is passed, we find out what that real number is, and then they come back to Mark and ask him to adjust those numbers to match what we really can levy by law. So that's, that's what it is, is that adjustment.
Yeah, when the assessors put in the EAV, that's when we know the new, the new construction, and then they, before we actually levy it, they'll, they, they need us to tell them how to do it, and they would just do it pro rata. They would just take it and give whatever you ask for across the board, shave it down by a few percentages, same percentage shaved down for every fund, but we don't want to do that. So we, we want to make sure that we put it where we want it to be. And so that's why we, we make an adjustment to the clerk's document, which the clerk would just do that across-the-board thing, and give them the same total, and our new rate is $1.6755. 1.6755 is our new operating fund rate. And with our debt service levy, which is roughly the same as last year, our new, our new total levy is 1.9131. And last year it was 1.9500, so it, it dropped by three, almost four cents, 3.69. And that's just a natural mathematical thing because our excess valuation went up by 4.7%, but our tax cap limit was 2.8%. So because of that, the math works out that we, our rate will continue to drop as long as our EAV is, percentage is higher than our tax cap rate. So that's, I know I threw a lot at you really quickly. I don't know if you have any questions or?
And this is up for action later this evening, so.
Yes. It's a resolution. It'll have to have proven sign.
All right. Any other questions on that one?
Nope.
All right. The next one on the agenda is proposed student fees for next year.
I think I get the next three.
It's the Mark show for a little while.
That's why I have mute on here because they're gonna be barking dog at some point during one of these presentations. So, let's see, the, the student fees we saw at a prior board meeting, we just wanted to give you time to think about it. We have the same documents here for you to look at. There's, there's really only one small change, and that's athletic participation by $3 and non-athletic participation by roughly 5.3%, another $3. And the only reason that we pushed on this is that it primarily helps pay for the transportation for these, and transportation costs are gonna be pretty high. You'll see that in, in a couple of minutes. We'll be talking about those again. So that's the only change. It's not, it's not real significant. There's a, you know, nothing big there.
And then all the remind, all the remainder, remaining fees are not changing, so they're same as last year.
Keep everything the same.
Any questions on that one?
All right. There'll be an action item on this.
And that is also an action item. The next one is food service management contract with Chartwells, which is an increase this year at CPI, which it is each year. I'll turn it over to Mark to talk about this one.
Yeah, I say, we, we really, you know, kudos to Jere. Jere Etheridge, our business manager, has handled the food service that's been thrown on us to feed any child 19, or under the age of 19 in the district, not even if it's a free, you know, frame-reduced or waiver child. And Chartwells has really stepped up and really did a great job in getting that off the ground for us and working really well with Jere. And now we're coordinating it between the two feeder schools, two senders, the largest senders, 58 and 68, Woodridge and Downers Grove. So we've got a really good relationship with them, and we hope we can keep it through the next year or two because, you know, next year, the servery will be down and, and trying to get everything in, in place. I mean, we, they, they will make it work, but there, there's gonna be a lot of turmoil going on over there at North High School, and we don't know what it's gonna do to participation.
Well, the new, the new servery will be up and running in time for the next school year.
But, well, you're right, but I mean.
Just not the expanded cafe.
Everything around it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The cafeteria and the servery will be up and running in time, but the full, full service option that we're adding with the cafes won't be in place until the following school year.
They've been hanging on because we haven't had great participation, and we're hoping that we can really spark it. But they've, again, they've done a great job with this, this, this food service program that we've just been thrown into, serving kids in the community. So we hope that they, well, this is, this is a limit that the contract calls for, so there's really not much adjustment here for us to think about. We have a multi-year agreement with them, and this renewal is just gonna allow it to go forward at the CPI level. Doesn't include new construction, just pure CPI. So it's a well-controlled contract.
All right. That's an action item later. Questions?
Question, yeah. So in terms of the expenses that we're incurring for the remainder of this school year and the fact that we're providing food, which is fabulous, if we, if we're, if school needs to be done remotely next year, have we heard anything along those lines about the plans for next year? I know the universities are looking at remaining remote.
No, we've heard no additional guidance yet. We're, we're still waiting for the executive order that talks about between now and the end of the school year. There's a whole bunch of things hanging out there that we need clarified on how we close out the school year under remote learning. And then we imagine, once we get that, they'll start working on what should happen next year.
Next year.
But, I mean, we're having, we're doing all the what-if-ing internally around that, but we still, you know, it's at, at the discretion of the governor, so we're waiting to hear what that is. We also don't know if we'll be, be providing meals for the duration. So if meal service will be expected to be continued throughout the summer or if that expectation ends at the end of the school year, we don't know where that's at. But the, theoretically, the state is reimbursing us for 100% of the cost of all of our meals.
Okay, so we are fine no matter what happens for this year and for, and even if we have to go through the summer. Okay, thank you.
And even though they're not low-income kids.
Anybody, anybody who needs a meal, we provide it, and then we're reimbursed for that.
How are we finding that people are being receptive to that?
Yes.
You're getting a lot of takers?
Yeah, between the three school districts, now that we have kind of a cooperative between the three, it's Yeah, between the three school districts, now that we have kind of a cooperative between the three, it's working a little more smoothly, just because we're not duplicating efforts. And Jere and then the counterparts at fifty-eight and sixty-eight have been amazing in putting that all together. And now after spring break, we're starting to get into a rhythm of how this can work. And we're doing two meal services a week, and they pick up multiple days worth of food each of those days. And at, and they go to select locations throughout the community, and that seems to be working pretty well now. Except we do have a few students homeless or those that are not able to get out of their house that we actually are doing deliveries to. So all in all, it's working, and we're providing good service to our community as a, as a result.
Well, please, thank you to all of you, and especially thank you to Jere.
Yeah, Jere has been superhero through all of this, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. And then the next one is renewal of transportation contract with First Student.
Right. And also had a good relationship and have a good relationship with First Student. And we coordinate this with our two large senders again, so this is, is what we all agreed to do. This, this is a bigger increase than normal. We're actually just renewing now. The first contract was for three years, ending in this year, twenty nineteen, twenty. And so technically, we're out of that first three-year deal, and we just go year to year now. And until, until we decide we want to rebid it, or we, some, some other company decides they want to come in, they have to write us a letter, and then we would rebid it. This is a bigger increase in cost of living, obviously. But the understanding was that with the, the way the economy was operating at such a high level, it was very difficult to get drivers. And so they were going to step up their fees again from seventeen fifteen hour to, to twenty dollars an hour. And so they, I guess it was actually fourteen to seven, seventeen dollars this year, they're going to go to seventeen to twenty dollars for drivers. And to try and get enough, because they started the year without, with thirty drivers down for their terminal, six of those slots affected us. And we, we hired a regional manager to help us to work with on our account, as well as the two sender districts, fifty-eight and sixty-eight. And honestly, that guy was driving buses for a lot of the year, you know, so he was, he did a good job in the summer, but when the buses started coming in, he was, he did, and he did a really pretty good job when you consider all the work he was putting in. But he was still having to drive. So we, and my, here's the other piece that's tied tags into this. Currently, obviously, we're not using buses for daily attendance, but all of the, all of the contractors have approached the schools and asked if we would help support portions of the contract that don't directly relate to the kids being moved, like their lease on their, their terminal, maintenance on buses, lease cost on buses. And, and core personnel, like hiring and recruiting people, and, and that's what we agreed to continue to pay. So the, the number that stuck with most of the districts in the area was forty percent of what the daily rate is. And so we've, we are, we've reached that agreement that we would pay forty percent. That part of the thinking was, when we, we didn't know how long this, this shelter in place was going to be, and the bus company said, if we turn everybody on unemployment compensation right now in April, we won't get, we won't get these drivers back. They'll go different directions. They'll find jobs elsewhere than what I'll go, and we just won't have any busing for the rest of the school year. Now, I, we internally talked about it, and we felt it's not likely that we're going to go back to school this year. I'd rather keep our, our money in our, in our account, basically, and be ready to go for the battle next year. We might have to step up, pay even more. Depends if we're in a recession, depends if we have trouble with bus drivers. But at least this stage of going, starting with twenty dollars an hour, we feel it's a fair increase based on, on what we're going to see next year. I think it's going to be really a bidding war to get drivers next year, even with the recession in place.
Yeah, so I know now we're factoring the pandemic and everything in it, but I got the increase from fourteen to seventeen. That kind of made sense. But, but then now to go to twenty dollars, and I'm assuming the hourly rate, and my assumption is all this was prior to, they had come to these decisions prior to the pandemic. So we're saying that, they're saying it was still hard to retain drivers at the seventeen dollars an hour?
Well, they ended up furloughing all their drivers, and, and, and what typically the drivers do take a couple of months of unemployment, but this is going to be a longer period of time. And just a longer ti, there's, there's other issues that arise. They have to maintain their licensing or school bus permit. They need to go to classes for that. If they're on furlough or off, if they're on furlough, they can control those and have them be given, you know, take the test, the mandatory CPE that they have to continue. If they're on unemployment, they're not their employee anymore, and they can't compel them to, to keep their license in place. And these guys might go different directions, do something else. Not all of them go on unemployment. They may find it. So I, we, we did this talking, and we, there was a survey of other, other districts in the area, and they're paying as high as twenty-one fifty in other school districts. So we still won't be at the top of that order, but we'll be competitive. So.
Before this all hit, we, we were still having a hard time getting bus drivers. And, and we don't know when we come back. I, I know unemployment rates might go up, but we still don't know if we'll be able to attract bus drivers. They all have to be certified to come back. We'll still be competing with other school districts for bus drivers, and that's, there's a shortage of those to begin with. And we also don't know if COVID is still going on, if people will want to drive buses in those situations. So having a competitive rate in comparison to other school districts, some of the school districts are already in a long-term contract with rates locked in, so we're competing against a market here.
No, this is good information. I had no, I have no background and no education.
We're in uncharted waters here, really. Nobody knows what's going to happen.
Yeah. Okay.
Mark, could you clarify for me what you said, though? Did you say we're not going to give them forty percent of their contract for the remainder of the year?
Yeah, we are going to pay, because we, not just First Student, there's, there's also three different special needs companies. And, and so they're giving me backup, so I'd say to verify forty percent would, would, would be the, those things like keeping their lease and keeping the buses. And so, and keeping some, some core staff that do recruiting, because we want them to recruit during the summer and, and make sure they get, so we want to make sure they have some key people. So there'll be four, four companies we do this with. It's relatively small for the special, we're talking a few thousand in some, some cases.
So it'll be forty percent for the remainder of the, this current year, and then the rate will increase.
Yeah, so it's going to be about a month and a half that they, that they do that. Maybe, maybe a little bit more than that, maybe two months.
Yeah, and then we go to these new rates with the start of the new school year, assuming we're back and everything's running.
Yeah, and we won't see a bill for July or August. We'll, we'll see half of the month of August, and we get that in September.
All right. Any other questions on this one? All right, that's an action item later on as well. All right. And the next one is the intergovernmental agreement with our partner districts. Each of them, over the next week or so, is doing one of these with us, so they're doing the opposite half of this. What this allows us to do is to share some very specific data back and forth with the partner districts for students that we have shared. So like the, the students that came to us from District sixty-eight, we'll share back with them some specific data around graduation rates, SAT scores, some standardized testing scores, grades, teacher placement. For the students that they send over to us, we'll get some information about their students regarding their grades in seventh and eighth grade, assessment data, nationally-normed assessments, and their course recommendations. And then these will go into our Five Labs data analytics system to allow us to better analyze data. This will provide us a little bit of trend data, so we'll know how students were performing as they head into high school, and then we'll be able to see, did they continue on that track or change track in some way? And it also allow our elementary school partners to know, how did they do in preparing students to come over to us? So this just gives us a better view of the data, that if we were a K-12 school district, we would have all of this data. We're not a K-12 district, but this allows us to kind of simulate that through these agreements. So we think this is a really good thing for our community, and this is an action item as well later on this evening to enter into these agreements. So any questions on those? All right. We're working for about eighteen months on that, so it'll be good to get those to, to this point. And Scott's done a lot of work in, in getting all that through. All right. Jim, life safety work, auditorium, house lighting and electric at North High.
All right. This is for this summer. This is life safety work for North High. We've talked about this many times in the last year as we got approval downstate for the funding for this project. Four bidders, when we went out to bid on a scope of work, it is house lights, some theater lighting. They're all going to be switched to LED. As you remember, we're taking some lighting from South that was existing just two years ago, put in, bringing some of those light fixtures over north. Also, a dimmer rack and a new control system will be put in, but most importantly is the safety issue of the cloth wiring that's up on the house area. So that will be replaced as well. So a lot of scope in this project. Again, this is approved life safety work, and it's within the allotted amount that we are approved for. We scoped out the contractor references checked out, so qualifications completed. So tonight we'll be asking the board to accept the lowest bid, which is ABS Electrical Division, in a contract amount of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand.
All right. Any questions for Jim on this?
Yeah, hey Jim, how much of this is covered by the, the state grant, and how much of this is covered by our capital budget?
It is completely covered by life safety funds. Nothing's coming out of capital. So all this is within the means of what we bonded out for life safety work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Next one is master facility plan bid progress, and Jim's going to walk us through a couple of bids here.
So these are bids number nine and eleven for Bay City. First one on the board is for South. Plenty of work here, almost four million dollars for next year's work. Twenty-four sealed bids, good contractors, a lot we're familiar with. So, and came in at a very good price. These are the ones that we see substantial thickening. This is the next one. Rod, if you can put it to the north opening. So this was north, eight sealed bids, about three mil, uh, two point five million dollars worth of work, a lot of specialty stuff, that's why there were five bidders. But again, pricing came in very well. Between two of these sea openings for north and south, we had some substantial savings. On any of these bids?
I'm happy to see item number one, one, three on the list.
Absolutely. Much-needed outside painting over at South High School.
Yeah, I presume that's, that's the turquoise band going away.
Yes. And quite frankly, we were very surprised that the hundred and ten thousand dollar bid, it was lower than many of the others, but we brought them out, walked them around. We are absolutely positive to be able to get this worked on.
All right. And the color will be a steel gray color instead of the nineteen-sixties turquoise.
I just have a question in general about facilities, and I'm sorry, I can't open the agenda, and I'm not sure if you're going to talk about it. But with, with the fact that our schools are empty right now, is that expediting any of the work that's being done, or?
Certainly. We're, we have been working, I have been working, Hank has been at many of the meetings. So especially with the latest of schools being closed through May, we are pushing a lot of the work to be done now. We've actually got some work done already. We were waiting for that last wave of, we're not coming back in May. So now we're organizing, and we're going to really hit this hard and get a lot done. We hit our target of August very well. The only thing I mentioned on our last board meeting, the only thing so far so good is equipment and large items, anything shipped overseas, some flooring from Italy, some items from China. Those are the ones we're keeping a close eye on to make sure that we have material. But on the construction side of it, we are going very hard at both schools.
I, I drive by South quite frequently, and I'm always shocked to see how many people out there working and so much progress.
We are, we are really rocking and rolling right now.
Yeah.
Part of the major changes that will be able to occur is that southeast academic wing at North High, there, there was a lot of work where we were going to move students out of classrooms for the last two weeks of school, so that we could, that project was going to take us two weeks on the front end and probably two weeks on the back end of the summer. And we would have been moving students in, after the school year started into that wing. We're hoping now we can get an early enough jump on it that everything is ready in time for school to resume. So that, that's the biggest one. Up until now, it's been little stuff, asbestos and those kinds of things. We tried to get out of the way, thinking that we were going to come back on May first. But now, now we can really redesign some of this and get a head, head start on, on some of these big projects.
Will that translate to additional savings or pretty much a wash?
Not really. It's, it's work that would have been done anyway. We just pay it, we just have it done and pay for it sooner. Mark has had to restructure some of the payment structure, that we have enough funds to pay this work out earlier as a result. But other than just managing the projects and making sure we can pay for them, you know, by, by the fund, the flow of funds beyond that, it's not a huge savings either way. It just saves us that, gets us into them maybe right at the start of school year, assuming we're back then.
Oh, just make it easier, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Anything else on the bids? All right. So we are transitioning into the master facility plan. This is every month your budget update, so we'll go into that. Rod, if you could share the budget report. You have this in, in full version. I'm just going to, as I do each month, hit on the highlights here. And the big number that you should always look at is estimated at completion contingency. That, that's your number one temperature gauge of how we're doing. If you remember, we started the whole project at about seven point seven million. After ninety-nine percent of the bids are out, and we've really scoped out all of the work here for the summer, and we've put in all of our anticipated costs, we're now at six point five, about six point six million dollars, which is very healthy. Construction-wise, White has requested that there would be one million available in contingency for each of the two summers for unexpected things to come up. So we have absolutely that two million dollars there. We are going to come to you in a little bit and talk about some additional expenditures we believe we should make that will lower that contingency down. But the contingency is very healthy at this point. So a couple of points where there's been adjustments in the last month. Once again, we're getting closer on those two committed numbers for north and south. As those bids come in, we, we get a truer number of what it'll cost at the end. And the other number you'll see that has steadily increased as time has gone on is the owner budget costs. That's where the safety items and the asbestos removal, which has continued to outpace expectations throughout this project, all has fallen. So that number has grown by another hundred thousand, I believe, since you saw it the last time. And that's, it's really closely tied to unsuitable soils at north, along with those bleachers and asbestos removal. Jim, anything else I'm missing there that I need to point out?
No, you did very well. The unsuitable soils was a big hit. Asbestos wasn't huge, but there was some there. But. But it ate it up. So and, and some consultant fees that we had to pay, but that was minimal.
Yeah. So, but this contains everything that we've talked to you so far. It contains the drive at, the Dunham Drive at South. The drive from 63rd is not in there. We've been told from the traffic consultants to, well, first of all, you really can't do a traffic study right now because there is no traffic. And two, they want to see how the Dunham Street circle impacts traffic flow before we would even talk about 63rd. So that one's on hold and we can always come back and add that later on down the road if we feel that's the right thing to do. So Rod, if you go to the next page of this. No, not that one, the next page of the budget. Just scroll down there. Thank you. All right, the next budget items we look at every month is the remaining contractor allowances. Remember, when we bid items out, there's a contingency inside of the bids. And that's kind of your first buffer. Since Phase A is almost done, all that's left is some fire alarm work and some sprinkler work that goes along with that. We're down to only 53,000 left in there. If we don't use that, that goes back into the contingency. Phase two, Phase B, which we still have work going on this summer. We still have a lot of contracts out there. So you still have 232, 233,000 dollars in those allowances. If those aren't all used up at the end of this summer, those come back into the contingency as well. If you remember, at the end of Phase A, we did have money come back to the contingency and help restore that as a result of that. And then Phase C, you can see, and this is just at South. You have sitting out there 1.5 million. Rod, I think we skipped a page. Can you go up one more? There you go. So that's at South. This is what it looks like across the district. So those numbers almost double in each of those things. So Phase A, sitting out there 138 across the district. And as I said, that, that amount at South. B, 541,000. And Phase C, about 2.5 million. Remember, all, almost all of Phase C work is scattered between the end of this summer through next summer. So those allowances will sit there for a long time. And then site improvements is still sitting at about $100,000. You can see furniture, we're starting to buy furniture. That allowance remaining right now has gone from 5.1 million, which is what the overall budget is, down to 300, or 3,266,000 because we've ordered the furniture for this Phase B work. And if you look at the larger presentation that was shared with the board, you can see all the wonderful details on all of that furniture. So the, the types we're picking out, what's coming in and what's being ordered. A large amount of that furniture, such as student chairs, was selected with the input of students. So that's overall budget, what we're looking at right now. So that key number right there, remaining contingency at about 6.6 million. So any questions on the budget?
Looking good, looking good.
Looking real good. All right. In this last week, Rod, if you go to the other presentation. So we have that contingency of 6.6 million dollars. What we do periodically, about quarterly, is go to the board, or go to the core team, which looks at the recommendations that have come for changes in the scope of work to consider alternates, which are additions or changes that would be paid for out of that contingency. What we brought to the core team last week was this $936,000 in changes. All of these changes were recommended by the core team. And that would be the maximum cost of these changes. So the way that we've done this over the last couple of years is I bring these to you on the recommendation of the core team. If a board member would like for us to, we can pull these out for an action item at a future board meeting before we move forward. We can discuss if we want to do that. If not, we just kind of do a straw poll. And if everybody's okay with these changes, we just move forward with them. So to just give you a quick description of each of these. The first one is an additional $20,500 in cost. That's the maximum cost of that. And that is to install fiber optic cable, fiber optic runs between the buildings and the new squad rooms slash press boxes. What this will allow us to do is to use those squad rooms more as classrooms because we'll have high speed internet there so we can stream video and those kinds of things. It also allows us to stream video of competitions in events from the stadiums because we'll have a really strong internet connection coming back. So this one was recommended by the core team to do for those reasons. So after each of these, I'll stop for any questions. So any questions on the fiber runs? Okay. The next one is the north math office. This one's a little complex in the fact that North High was, is already getting, their science office is being remodeled as part of the changes this summer. But one of the things is they kept looking at the plan and looking at where things would fall. We were going to get a classroom remodeled and the science office remodeled. As we kept looking at that, we were going to be putting a classroom in an interior part of the building and an office with exterior windows. So as the north team kept looking at this, they thought, well, shouldn't we put the, the classroom out on, you know, where it's going to get natural light and everything else? Where not everybody is there all day in the interior of the building. Well, the spot where the science office should go isn't quite big enough for the science office, but it's right next to the math office. So North High started looking at if they make a combined math-science office suite, we now gain enough room to do both at the same time. But of course, this comes at the cost of remodeling another office. So end result is a much, much better use of space for North High. It kind of gives us an interesting math-science office combo and puts those two departments close to one another. When we do a office remodel, we typically also remodel the kitchenette inside of that. Instead of there being two kitchenettes, there would be one, which is a little bit of the savings as a result of combining the two departments. And the big change is, is it gives us an exterior classroom, which is, we're always trying to get that natural light into our instructional spaces. So eventually, at some point down the road, we would have brought to you probably through capital, a request to remodel the nor, the north math office. We're bringing it to you now as a part of the larger scope of the master facility plan and believe that it makes sense to do it at this point. So any questions on that one?
Hank, I just wanted to point out that the cost on this too kind of lined up with other office remodeling projects we've done out of capital in the last couple of years. So the, the cost seemed to make sense. At least that was my, that's my remember from our, from our core team meeting the other day.
Out of capital, we're doing world languages at South right now. And that cost is, I think, 350 or 340, somewhere right around there. So Jim could correct me if I'm incorrect here.
And so I would just, just, you know, it's a, it's a pretty good sized number there. But I just wanted to point out for the rest of the group that it, it, it seems to make sense compared to other things that we're doing. That's all.
Yeah.
We're at 260 for the world language for this work this summer for capital.
Right, so 260.
Yeah. But we did an English office at South in the past. So it usually runs between 260 and 360 depending on size and furniture.
Right, and world language is a little bit smaller of a department in comparison to the math. So there's more furniture there and those kinds of things, so.
But just to be clear, this is, this is on top of the additional office remodel? Or this is?
This is an addition.
Science model together?
This is, there's an, also a cost already built into the master facility plan that always was for the science remodel. This is in addition to that cost. Yeah.
And these are estimates too. These are not actual costs, so.
The fiber run one is pretty close. I think that one's been bid out. North mass math remodel is an estimate. But it's a solid one based on past work. All right, any questions on that one?
It's the only one in this group that's an estimate. All the other ones are solid numbers right now.
All right, the next one is South Phase B, existing window replacement. So actually, Rod, could you scroll down here? I'm going to try to find the picture of it. Or maybe it was, it might be above it. Keep going up here for me. Right there. Back down one more.
Yeah, back.
There you go. So the picture in the bottom right hand corner is what we're talking about here. This is about two thirds of the windows in the new Art Commons that's being constructed right now, what Nancy just said, that what she drives by and sees at the corner of 63rd and Dunham. These are the windows that are there from the old building that look into the new commons space. This is really, this is probably 90% an aesthetic change to make sure that the windows on this half of the commons match the new windows on the other half of the commons. The other part of this change is we would have had to do some modifications to these windows to make sure that they were sealed because the current windows open up into that space. They need to be 100% sealed because this now becomes a firewall. And on the first floor, we would have had to do some tinting so that students that are in the commons aren't looking right into classrooms, that there's some opaqueness to that. So just because we want this space to look pristine and we are at a point where we kind of cut costs and didn't have these in our original budget just because we wanted to be really careful that we made sure we stayed within budget. We didn't have these in the original scope of work. But because our contingency is healthy right now and we've saved money in other places, we would like to finish out this part of the project and add these back in, into the project and make sure that this space, when it opens next fall, is absolutely 100% done. It makes sense to do this now before we put the porcelain floor down. They could be done afterwards, but it's the easiest to do it before we put down tile and they can drive heavier equipment on it while it's a concrete floor. So with that all in mind, the core team recommended that we do this, this replacement at this time at a cost of $183,000. That includes the tinting and window coverings for those windows. So any question on those?
So my only concern, Hank, this is Dan, is so there's really no functionality gain. This is pure aesthetics. We just want these windows to look nice. It seems a lot of money for something that's a pure aesthetic play and not really adding any other benefit for our, our staff or our students.
Yeah, the, the two things that it does is it makes it so that, it makes it so that those windows are sealed shut, never open, never can be opened. We will try to attempt that by screwing shut the other ones. But you know, there is a firewall aspect of sealing those up. We'd be fine either way. This just absolutely guarantees that nobody can ever open one of those windows. But yeah, like I said, it's majority aesthetics at this point for that space.
Right, I just, I mean, there, there's lots of areas in both schools that are fairly old and I would think we need some updating before we spend $185,000 on something that's purely aesthetic. I don't know, I just struggle with something with the main benefits is for the look size.
This was an item during the core, this was the one item during the core team meeting too that this got 75% support from the group, whereas everything else got 100% support. And I was even suggesting, you know, I voted on this one instead of voting for recommendation right now. I was recommending, I voted to recommend to revisit this in a few months. I actually wanted, I was hoping that maybe we could do more. There was an opportunity here maybe to do a little bit more with sound insulation, that sort of thing. And I don't know how much that was, I wasn't getting a good sense for how much that was really looked at.
It was, it's not a concern, Mike. They believe that the sound proofing of the glass that's there will be satisfactory for the use in that space. So there, it was looked at and they, they run their, their modeling on that. And they determined that the old windows were fine for that and the new windows would be fine as well. So it, it would be disingenuous for me to tell the board that we would do this to increase any sound proofing because the feeling was that even the old windows are fine for that.
Yeah, I mean, all, all, all of the rest of this feels like it's the right thing to do. You have the stadium fiber runs, the math office remodel, the auditorium, studio theater. This one just feels a little superficial that, you know, we want the windows to look nice. I just, I, I, I don't know, I would, I would suggest we may want to think about, is there something better we could do with almost $200,000 to improve our schools? And some interior windows that, that'll look nicer.
Well, I will point out that part of this project was to increase the aesthetic look at South. And South has felt, and their students have felt for a long time like they've played second fiddle to North High, where North High has gotten a lot of things that look very nice, like, and they, and they are functional, but they.
But, but Hank, I mean, I, I hate, I, I've heard many times people playing the north and south hard here. If you look at this overall project, we are spending, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, like you guys do, 16 million more at South than we are at North. So I don't, I, I don't want anybody to feel that, oh, we have to spend $180,000 to make people feel good about how South looks. I just, that doesn't fly at all.
Well, to be fair, Dan, under the last round, couple of rounds of construction, North had more spent on it than South did. So.
Absolutely. I, I can't do anything about what happened 20 years ago. I need to do something about what happened now.
Sure, we can, Dan, by, we actually can do it by spending $183,000 on South and making sure that their building is aesthetically pleasing just like North is.
Absolutely.
So by interior, interior windows versus maybe science equipment, additional 3D printers or many other things we can do at $200,000 seems a little bit excessive because we want something to look nice on an interior window. I mean, it just seems a little, little outrageous.
I'm sorry, Dan, but I think that we spent a lot more than that on the facade on Main Street at North High to make it look good.
And Carrie, I didn't vote, I didn't vote for that. And I would have voted for it 25 years ago. I think whoever voted for that needs to look at that. I'm talking about what we're voting on today. What we're looking at today is $185,000 on windows to make it look nice.
And these are interior windows, right, Hank?
Yes, they are in the.
They're interior. They're not going to keep the elements out and no one's going to see them from the street, correct?
Well, but you'll see them from the, the commons.
Well, I have, I have a couple of questions here. And one is, I would argue that, because what you're saying is that they'll help be a firewall, right? And safer for our students because hopefully we wouldn't want anybody to, I don't know, climb out of one of those windows. It would be helpful to close them as well as it would be less distracting for students who are on the ground floor because we would film those windows or cover.
We're going to have to do something one way or another.
So people can't look in.
Right, we would have to do something one way or another. We just think doing it once now is the, the smarter move to just replace everything and update it all at once.
If we delayed doing this for, say, a few months till we knew if we needed that money somewhere else, to Dan's point, would it ultimately cost us more or would it cost us about the same?
It would likely cost us about the same, a little bit more because right now they can more easily get into that space, but not significantly more.
Not significantly more, okay, thank you.
And that was the, to go back to Mike's. And that was the, to go back to Mike's point on the vote with the core team, 100% of the core team, 100% of the core team supported making this change. 25% of the core team said to wait until next summer to do it, which is an option, until we know where our contingency sits better.
So this probably, obviously, I probably know the answer to this, but is this the best possible deal we can get on this? Meaning, is there a particular type of window that we're getting that that's more expensive that we could potentially look at something less expensive? I'm just asking based on, I mean, it is a lot of money, however, I do understand the direction we're going because we're doing, you know, there's things in this project for aesthetics because that was a part of the thoughts for the project, but is it the absolute, is there something we can change about the window to encourage some cost savings or no?
No, this is probably the best price we're going to get at this point.
Okay.
So this one sounds like it's not a no-brainer and it sounds like there's some questions on the 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 table here. So I think this is one that we probably need to take a vote on at the next board meeting in May and see where where we sit on it. And that'll give us some time for you guys to think about it and raise questions that you have over the the course of it. Just so you know, it's 23 windows. So that's a cost of about $8,000 a window and that's inclusive of the tinting and the window coverings. All right. And just as Mike points out in the chat here, these were cut at, from, these were in the original project scope and we cut it when we were concerned about the cost of the project and now we're recommending adding these back into the project. So they were a part of the original, as Mike says here, aesthetic intent of the space. So you know, this was part of the original design intent of that. All right, so we'll come back to that one next month and take a vote on it and see what what folks want to do. Last one, this one is a maximum cost, so the South team believes that they can get the cost down from these items, but there's five items captured in this recommendation. So maximum cost of $384,114 or 380, yeah, 384,114. The first item is platforms to put the chairs on to, in the black box theater, the small theater, so that you can arrange the seating in different structures. Rod, if you can scroll up one slide for me. So here's some examples of what those different layouts might be. So you could do theater in the round, you can do them in all kinds of different settings. The areas in blue are these platforms. We do this now, but every time we do this to do a small production like we just did our Black History Play at South, which was on the stage in a small theater setting, very similar to the promenade seating layout A you see in the bottom right-hand corner. When we do those kinds of productions, we actually have to build the platforms, use them, and then there's no way to store them currently. So then we tear them down again and then rebuild them the next time we need them. What this would do is provide a platform that we could actually set up, use, and then it stores in a compact format where then we could have it at our disposal to set up at a different point in time. So we think because of that and the fact that we don't have to spend all the time building, tearing down, we know they're safe, we know that they can be stored, we recommend adding this one in. Questions on this one before I move to the next piece in the auditorium?
Hey, during our, our core team discussion, I brought up a question about parity with North on this issue. Can you speak to that for the group?
Yeah, North has a little different type of space, but what they have are risers that they've purchased in the past for that space. It's not a comparable apple for apples space, but in their space, they do have a riser system to put chairs on. All right, the next one is loose theater seating. This would be the seats that sit on those risers for a comfortable set of seating. Ed believes that we need seating, but he doesn't believe we need it at this cost, so he's going to go out and try to get that number as low as he can get it for appropriate seats for that space. We don't know what that number is yet, but it will definitely be less than the 62,000. So, but we need, we need comfortable seats to sit on the platforms. So Ed's going to go out and find the most cost-effective seats he can find to go into there. The next one is wireless microphones for the auditorium. One of the things that's changing in this is that we're going to have a much bigger auditorium space at South than we've had at the spa, in the past. So we have some equipment needs and that's what the next three are. So one is making sure that we have microphones that work in that space and have enough channels to work in that space. We're going to likely have larger productions now because we have a larger theater space. So this would allow us to expand the wireless mic system so that we could have enough to accommodate all the kids that will now be involved in larger programs. The one after that allows for intercom communications between the different areas of the theater. So the where we have costumes, where we have lighting backstage, all of the pit, all of those kinds of areas so that there can be wireless communication between those, intercom communication. And the last one is our new auditorium is very large and our current piano that we share between that space and the choir room will no longer be loud enough to fill the space. So we need to buy a new grand piano and the old grand piano that we're, it's not even grand piano, the old piano that we are using that rolls right now between the choir room and the auditorium has a lot of wear on it because we keep having to move it back and forth between those spaces. So even if we weren't moving it back and forth or we're continuing to, we would probably be recommending to upgrade that, that piece of equipment. So this gives us a piano that will actually fill the, fill the room. So that's those last three items. So questions on any of those last three?
I don't think so.
So South believes they'll get that number lower than that. We're just saying that will be the maximum cost for that. So anybody want to, anybody have any concerns about that one where we'd need to discuss it at a later date?
Hank, how firm is that price on the grand piano?
That's an estimate. So we got a few quotes on a few different models and that's kind of the average of where it sits.
Is there a, is there, would there be cheaper to just rent or lease one for each production that you do?
No. We use that quite a bit. It's not easy to move a piano in and out of a space. Other questions?
I'd say, yeah, too, with the piano, it's an investment, right? So even after we're done with it, somebody else, there'd probably be a market for it in the end too. I mean, it's, I'm just saying it's unlike other things like the wireless mics after several years, they won't be worth much if anything, but the piano will still be worth something 20 years from now, too.
Yeah, the lifespan of a piano for a school is a very long lifespan, so we'll get a lot of use out of that. All right, hearing none, then I, unless somebody speaks up, I'm, I feel like everybody's comfortable with us moving forward with the stadium fiber runs, the north math office remodel and the south auditorium studio theater additions. And that we will come back in May and discuss South Phase B window replacement, if it should happen, and if it should happen, should it happen this summer or should it happen the following school year?
Okay.
All right, thank you for all your feedback on that. The permission requests, we had them this month and we responded to them and they're available on the website as they always are. All right, moving into the consent agenda.
Hey Hank, before we move to the consent agenda, we probably should go back to reception of visitors for people to comment on things that we would take action on tonight. That first section we skipped over.
Yeah, let me see if we had any, we had none before the meeting started, Mike. I will take a look and see if any came in since then. We've had no reception, no, no comments come in.
Can we put the consent agenda up? On screen, can we put the consent agenda up on the screen?
Before we take action on the consent agenda, I need to draw attention to the updated Personnel Report A. We have added in the appointments area the certified staff member Elizabeth Willis as a North High social worker. And the other thing that I would just like to draw attention to is we've got five certified appointments, four out of the five, the entire process started post-stay-at-home. And our department chairs and building administrators have been working through Zoom and hangouts and everything else in order to do the entire hiring process and the first gentleman, we started, I'm sorry, Andrea, the PE teacher at North, we had started the process before the stay-at-home, but we had to complete all the rest of the steps afterwards, so shout out to our folks who are continuing to do the work that we need to do to fill positions for this coming school year.
Rod, do you have access to the agenda? Can you pull up the agenda in the consent section?
I have a question about Ms. Winchell. She's a pretty pivotal person in our South, South High Fine Arts. How are we going to cover for her this, this coming year?
Well, Glenn Williams obviously is working on doing just that during this time period. Our hope is that Margaret will come back to us after she completes the advanced study program that she is taking the leave to go do right now. You're right, it's a tough position to replace, but that's what Glenn's working on right now.
Okay, she's, she's dynamite. She's great.
We'll do everything we can to get her back. So does anybody have any piece of the consent agenda they want to remove, they want to speak about? Hearing none, we need a motion to approve the personnel report, leave of absence, certified appointment, certified appointment classified. The personnel report, retirement, certified retirement classified, the financial pages, the appointment to the DuPage Area Occupational Educational System Board of Directors, the authorization for the Associate Superintendent for Student Learning to waive specific graduation requirements for 2020 graduates on a case-by-case, non-presidential basis and an updated Board of Education Policy 3.52 and 3.68 to reflect changes in the position.
Still moved.
I'll second.
Terry and Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, the consent agenda carries, thank you.
All right, and recommendations for action. The first one, the board, or the administration is recommending that the board approves is a resolution on the 2019 tax rates as discussed earlier this evening.
Still moved.
Second.
Joanna?
Yeah.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. Second is the approval of the proposed student fees for 2020, 2021.
Still moved.
Second.
Terry and Joanna.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic, I'm sorry, excuse me, Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. The approval of renewal of food service management contracts with Chartwell's.
Still moved.
Second.
Terry and Joanna.
Terry and Joanna.
Thank you. Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. Next is the approval of renewal of transportation contract with first student.
Still move. Second.
What seconded, was it Terry?
Yeah.
Joanna and Terry, okay.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
No.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. Next is the approval of the intergovernmental agreements with partner districts.
Still moved.
Second.
Terry and Joanna?
Yeah.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Yes.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. And finally, the award of the contract for life safety work, auditorium house lighting and electric North High.
Still move. Second. Go ahead, Mike.
Joanna and Mike.
Thank you. Joanna Vazquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller?
Aye.
Dan Nicholas?
Aye.
Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Rick Pavanato?
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka?
Aye, motion carries. Moving on, do we have anybody for the second reception of visitors?
Let me open up the forum to make sure nothing came in while we were sitting here. Nope, nothing new has come in while we've been meeting.
Do we have reports or?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who's donated to the the fund that was started.
Now, we have two funds, one that we started and stopped, which was to fund the cost of the protective face shields that our teachers and students are printing and distributing. We've I think distributed over 4,500 of them at this point. It was very cool to see a picture of one in open heart surgery, or a whole team of them in open heart surgery last week, so pretty amazing what's going on there. But we actually brought in so much that we, we cut off the fundraising campaign for that because we feel like we have enough to offset the cost of all the face shields and or repair our equipment when we're done. But then we have started a new campaign. We know that times are getting tough out there and we're hearing more and more families that are having trouble accessing food and resources. So we've started a new fundraising campaign through the foundation to raise funds to help us support families in need. So that one's just underway this week.
And then it can be accessed through the 99 Foundation website?
Yes, it can.
Yes. I'm really proud of our teachers and our kids and the face shields. I really am. Thank you. And what a great community we live in. Just.
Is there, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, I just.
Sorry, I got an echo coming in, so I I only hear me start to talk and then when you cut off. Um, just a question. I was going to say, is there a way, because these are recorded, if we could say just how they access the site for the donations?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
How do, if we could.
I'll get the link, I'll find it, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, that'd be nice.
Yeah, that's all.
Great idea.
I, I usually have it on the top, but I don't right now. I will find it very quickly. I will find it very quickly here for you.
Okay, no worries. I'm sure, I'm sure we'll be calling this out every meeting.
Website it is, is D as in district, D99EF.org. D99EF.org. And from there, under the donation link, they can find these campaigns.
Perfect.
And thank you to our community just for all the support for everybody.
The support in many ways, in many ways that the community has been very supportive of us on this. So it's been great in many ways, the community organizations, working with the village, with everybody else. Oh, there you go, Rod, nice. You know, the, not just the residents, but the other community organizations have been fabulous as they always are within these crazy times.
Anything else on the, on the Foundation tier?
No, no, no. We, of course, as, as you know, we, we haven't really met. You know, we've just been emailing.
Dan, anything on Lend? Joanna Sasse?
No, we did have a meeting on Google Meetup, but no one could hear anyone. So we're having one on Wednesday, hopefully that'll be better.
Hank, you were going to say something about Lend?
Dan was.
Yeah, just wanted to let you, there is a meeting on Friday morning for Lend, I believe it's a annual meeting. So hopefully that will, technology wise, go well, I will be attending that one online.
Okay. Um, anything on the Policy Committee, anything you want to?
No, we'll be pulling the Policy Committee together in the next couple of months for a virtual meeting. And assuming that we're still stay-at-home, we'll, we'll do it virtual, just like we do our regular board meetings. But I believe just last week, a new press issue dropped, and Julie is combing through that, as she always does, to get us started. So that'll be coming soon. And then Illinois Association of School Boards, one of the, I don't know if Mike has a report, but we are, the School District of Distinction awards that we apply for, application was just released for that. So we'll be working on that over the summer to submit so we can renew that recognition.
I just want to take a moment to just give a shout out to all of the administrators we have on tonight, and all of the teachers and all of the administrators in our districts. Just, you know, this has just been a tremendous effort to get our districts up and going. And a lot of this, you know, really Rod and Hank and Mark and other people and planning for this over years to make sure we had the connectivity, to make sure we had the Chromebooks, and just the, the getting everybody up and able to, to finish this school year remotely. I just, you guys are amazing, and thank you all. Because I know it was a lot of work and a lot of sleepless nights, and they're not ended yet. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy, nice, nice comment. Hank, since we really have been pushing the envelope here with our facilities and with the way we've been teaching and getting ahead of all this, has any thought been given into paying for Blue Ribbon?
We haven't discussed it right now, maybe down the road we will. I mean, right now, we've been in survival mode. But if that's something the board is interested in, we could put it on a future, a future discussion item, you know, see if that's something that takes a, it's a.
It's a couple of year process.
Yeah, it's a big effort. And I would like, if the board wants us to invest our time and energy in that.
Well, we've added staff at the administrative level.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying we can't. I just want to make sure that the full board is in favor of us doing that. So why don't I work on getting some information of what that means to everybody? Because Rick.
I don't know what that is.
It's a, it's a recognition given by State of Illinois for excellence.
The president.
Or, yeah, sorry.
The president comes in, because we've had, we got three of them at my school.
So, so it's an award of excellence. But it is a pretty rigorous process to get to that point. And it uses a lot of staff time and effort to get there. But it is a nice recognition to have, and it's, it's probably something that we've already earned.
That's what I'm saying, all the stuff we've implemented ahead of the game, it's not like we're generating brand-new stuff. We've done it already. It's just somebody needs to write it down and send it in.
Right, so once we make it through this craziness of right now, I definitely think it's worth revisiting, Rick.
Yeah.
Like you said, we, we've done the work, just be being recognized for the work we've already done.
Sometimes you gotta, you gotta, you gotta toot your own horn.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I appreciate Nancy, the kind words about all of the staff. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't compliment our students. They've been pretty amazing and rolling through just a lot of craziness. We have Ariel here, who is one of our seniors. I mean, class of 2020 is getting a whole different experience than all of the classes before them. And we're trying to do our best to make sure that they have a good experience and that they're, they're well-represented on the way out. But our kids are having to really make some changes and, and think differently and work differently. And for some of them, it, it works really well, and others it doesn't, just like anything with kids. And we're trying to make sure that our students know that we're here for them first and foremost, that we're here for anything that they need, whether it be food or social, emotional support, or somebody to talk to, or, or teaching and learning. We're here for all of those things. And the administrative team has been amazing in putting all of this stuff together. It's been a lot of long days and, and just, a lot of times, the rules change, hit stream on us, and, and you have to adapt and adjust. But everybody's doing great and, and rolling with it. And we're having pretty good participation. And the students that aren't participating, we're making sure we reach out to them and try to get them back engaged into learning here to close out the year. So a quick thank you to the whole administrative team, especially Ed and Janice and their leadership in the two buildings. You know, and then, you know, obviously, the tech, the tech team is like the offensive line here. You know, you only notice them when the stuff doesn't work. So, and most of the stuff's been working. So they've been amazing throughout all of this as well. So a lot of kudos go out to the people making sure that school works right now.
Yeah. In the process, anything else before we adjourn?
Nope.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Excuse me, upcoming board meetings, because the change.
So since we're still out of school and assuming our to stay-at-home order, our next meeting on May 4th is a workshop meeting. We're totally planning that we'll be on Zoom again, working in a couple of weeks. Right now, we don't have any items for open session there, but we would like to, to show up and go into closed. Between now and then, we'll share our three remaining employee group recommendations for compensation for next year. So that is our exempt staff, our CMG staff, and our administrative staff. So between now and then, the board will get a confidential memo about those groups. And then we can have a discussion on those things, and then there'll be action items at the May board meeting. I don't anticipate anything showing up between now and then that we need to discuss, but the world is very different right now. So something might show up between now and then that we do add in. But right now, we're planning on opening up, taking reception of visitors, and then going into closed session. And then back on May 18th, we should just plan on everything's virtual until it's not at this point.
All right.
Can we also mention the change in date of the parent-teacher advisory?
Yes, that one was rescheduled from April 28th to May 14th. And Scott's the one organizing that meeting, and I believe that is planned to be virtual as well, right, Scott?
Yes, it is.
No, everything is planned to be virtual right now until it's not anymore. Nice job, Scott, sitting there for a whole meeting and then getting called on at the end.
It's all good.
At least we didn't have a cardboard cutout set up in the back.
You're right. I might do that next time.
Thanks for the tip, huh? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He told me he was coming for the quarterly report.
Absolutely, Mark, absolutely.
All right, anyone else?
Okay.
Do you want a motion to?
But before we do, stay the freak home, everybody.
Absolutely.
Actually, I do have one more thing. A shout out to the board for modeling exactly what we're expecting our teachers and students to do. And doing things differently and, and working this way, it's tough, as you're seeing. It's hard to have a conversation this way. But thank you, board, for also serving as an example for our community and our kids that, that everything is, is working and that you can work differently, too.
Okay.
Yes.
And stay home.
And stay home and wash your hands.
Wash your hands. And don't touch your face.
And when socially distancing is over, let it be totally over. Okay.
Yeah.
So we have, we need a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Terry?
Second.
Cheryl, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, stay safe, everybody.
You too.
I know you're there working, social distancing, darling, social distancing.
Yeah, yeah. Sometimes it's harder than others. Take care.
Bye, everybody, good night.
Bye, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.